...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the meeting is being recorded by the Board Secretary and we had an executive, uh, the executive session was held on January 27th, 2018, at the board retreat and it dealt with personnel items. Looks like everybody is here. Okay, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes from our January 25th meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from January 25th, 2018? Dr. Sadikum?
Second.
Mr. Kern. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, we're gonna move on to our first general public comment session. I would like to take a couple of minutes just to remind everyone about the public comment. Please try to keep your comments to within three to five minutes and be brief and concise. Remember too, that the public comment was designed for comments that you have, but not to address any specific questions that would be better suited for the administration, such as if you had a specific question about your child's teacher or something like that. And also too, please refrain from making any disparaging comments directed at any one individual. You know, if you want to call everybody up here an idiot, that's fine, just don't call them out by name. So with that, let's move to our first general public comment and Madam Secretary, has anyone signed up?
Helen Kandraki.
Please state your name and area of residence.
My name is Helen Kandraki. I live in Haycock Township. For days, I have been agonizing over my comments regarding taxes. Just before I left my house, I came to come here, I received the Quaker Town School Board newsletter in regards to the 2018-19 budget woes article. Three items caught my attention. Number one, "Why do we have to limit ourselves tonight?" Ms. Weed said. Number two, "In an ideal world, we all would love no tax increase. I don't know why we would limit our options," Ms. Mitchell said. Number three, "The increase of $828,316 in healthcare costs." Maybe some of my comments, which I had written before receiving the newsletter, will cover some of these items. Let me tell you how my year 2018 started out for me. First, I had to replace the heat pump in my heating system, then my pipes froze, then my car broke down, and I was also sick for the first three weeks and needed medical attention. This cost me more than $2,000 over my monthly income. To add insult to injury, I learned that five board members voted to raise property taxes over the Act One cap. They want a 4.2% increase. I have one question for those who voted for the outrageous increase. Have you no empathy? Just where do you comprehend that those of us on fixed income are going to come up with the extra money to pay these obscene taxes? I searched my property many, many times and I can't find a money tree there. I paid my fair share, many times over, to educate your kids. For over 40 years, I've been paying taxes to this district with no perceivable benefit. All four new members ran on the premise of fiscal responsibility with no tax increases. Ms. Mitchell tells us she has a master's degree in business and many years' experience in balancing budgets. Do you call the increase you voted for fiscal responsibility? I have to balance my budget with what income I have. For your information, I too have a PhD. It's called poor, hungry, and deprived. I can't speak for everyone, but I am tired of paying handsomely for something I can't afford and for which I receive no tangible benefit. I recall when the decision was made to close the Milford School, it was said, "This is about our kids, so it's personal." And there's a lot of things that make the community feel they don't have a voice. It's also personal to me. Your family benefits by the taxes paid to the school district. I do not, but I still have to pay the ransom for my house. There's no nice way to say this, but this constitutes elder abuse. Most of the new members elected to the board are benefiting by the education this district provides. In the 20 years I attended these board meetings, I've seen how board members and parents bid more and more demands on the district, but are not willing to put their purse where their mouth is. They act like termites gnawing at the foundation of the solvency of the school district. Board members are elected to serve the whole community, not just certain factions, or should not be guided by self-interest. If you have forgotten, the school district is not the only entity that collects taxes on our properties. In 2017, my social security increased 3/10 of 1%, which was immediately absorbed in the increase in the cost of Medicare. This year, I received an increase of 2%. However, my Medicare increased over 23% and my supplemental insurance increased 160%. For those of you who may not be aware, my husband passed away approximately a year and a half ago. I lost his social security and I lost his pension. I'm on my own. For those of you who have not been aware, the social security benefits average between $15,000 and $16,000 per year. Last year, the president of the Quaker Town Community Education Association criticized the board for not using exemptions to Act One to increase taxes. When he retires, his weekly, and let me be more specific, his weekly pension will be more than I have to live on for one full year. Let's not forget, I had to contribute towards his generous pension and his healthcare. It's time to stop inflicting anguish, mental pain, fear, and distress in the elderly and robbing us of our basic needs, such as food, shelter, and essential medical care, and above all, taking away our financial stability. That is a clear definition of elder abuse. President Roosevelt once said, "The test of our progress is not whether we add more to the abundance of those who have much, it is whether we provide enough for those who have too little." My daughter, sitting with me, has a degenerative back disability that not only affects her back, but also her arms and legs. She is in need of medical treatments to alleviate the constant pain she is in. The money I pay for property taxes would go a long way to be able to help her with her medical expenses. My home also needs major repairs, which I can no longer afford to have done. Every day, I live with the fear of some major problem coming down on me. I'd like to give members of the board there an article, I have a few articles here that what happens when people can't pay their taxes. So, behooved for the few copies I have, but pass it around and let people know what we are up against. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kandraki.
Mrs. Kandraki, thank you so much for your comment, and I just want to let you know, I felt your, you know, the pain and the anguish that you're going through, so I appreciate sometimes the courage that it can take to get up and express that. I want to assure you, and this is something I feel was very much confused by the article, that we did not vote to raise taxes. I had a lot of concerned citizens who brought that forth, and it's unfortunate because media wants to sell papers and they want click clicks, right? So they're gonna make a very provocative topic. So I get that, like the title, the headline, is what I'm saying. And that headline, some people, I'd say a lot of them, maybe not all, but a lot of them don't go on to read the rest of that article, and I'm not saying that's the case for you, but I just want to provide some clarity in that we did not vote to raise any taxes. We simply voted to allow the possibility for exceptions down the line as an option, in which I am on the Finance Committee and I can assure you is going to be the very last option, and we are gonna take careful time and attention, because I've heard stories like yours all too often, and in fact, I, my father is on disability and he has a lot of health issues, and I think it's extremely, and I'll try not to go too much down a rat hole here, that people have to worry about things like healthcare costs, that they're not getting enough, you know, money from social security, and a lot of people are facing that. The number one cause of bankruptcy actually is healthcare costs, and I think that is, everyone deserves healthcare and it should be a right, okay? So I'm not gonna go down any further than that, but FDR happens to be my favorite president, and so I really do appreciate all that he stands for and the new deal that he stood for and, you know, so I just wanted to assure you, I appreciate your feedback, and we will do everything we possibly can to be fiscally responsible, being mindful of not only the citizens who take advantage of education, but all the citizens in this community. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any comments? Okay, we'll move on to the superintendent's report, sir.
Thank you, sir. First off, I would, something that's not on the agenda, but I would like to catch up from what happened at our last board meeting. We had a 25-year recognition of our employees at 25 years of service. Ms. Sype, would you please come forward? You know I was gonna get you, 'cause I knew you were coming back. Laura Sype is an eighth-grade Milford social studies teacher, has taught at Milford and in Strayer now, and has done an awesome job. She volunteers her time in a lot of capacities in clubs, and sports, field hockey coach, former field hockey coach, and I'm just very grateful. Had to do it. Next thing I wanted to talk about was a, that after yesterday's snow day, some of you who don't have children might not have gotten that, but we, or you just didn't see any leavie buses traveling around on the icy roads in the morning, we had a snow day. So we have to go and go back to our calendar and look at emergency makeup days, and I went and visited with Ryan Lee and our QCEA president right before he left today, and we agreed to switch the days that are right before the holiday, the spring break, they, on the Wednesday, the 28th, and on the 29th. Wednesday is a, right now, scheduled to be a curriculum day, no student day. The next day is a school makeup day. We want to reverse those, so the school makeup day is on the 28th, and then the curriculum day is on the 29th. So, we have agreed to do that, and I'll put that information out unless, unless... Okay, I got some feedback from parents, they're looking at that, and interestingly, the next makeup day is the following Monday, and that would really take away from any kind of break, so we'll look at that one and, but...
Do we have two days to make up yet? Do we not?
We have, the next makeup day is February 16th.
Speaking of, there are two days that we lost to instruction already that we still haven't made up. Is my incorrect on that?
This is, that's, the two days, is February 16th makeup, and now the 28th, Wednesday, the 28th. Yeah, that's the, right before President's Weekend.
I never saw anything that said that was gonna be a day of class yet.
It was, I sent that out.
I just didn't see it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm sure my wife saw it, she knows all this stuff.
Any questions on that?
No, makes sense.
Thank you very much. Last week, our team up here in OTL, the Office of Teaching and Learning, did a analysis of our NWEA data, and I walked in on the meeting and sat through and listened to the feedback, and I wanted to bring that forward, one, to the Education Committee, and I believe that was before Mr. Anderson and others, and I wanted to give the rest of the board members just a brief update and ask Dr. Hoffman to do that.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. As Dr. Harner said, this update is regarding our NWEA testing. We give it three times a year, so I'll be talking a little bit more about it, but just so that you know what to expect. This test is something that our district has given for a number of years and is given in approximately 8,000 schools across the country, and I think, actually, 140 countries is what they tout on their website. So it is a nationally recognized exam, and the data that we receive pretty closely mirrors what we end up seeing on our PSSA exam, so, so you have that. So tonight, we're just going to briefly talk about some background information, give you a little bit of information about what MAP testing is. I do have slides for every building here on their individual PSSA projections, or how we think we will do this year on the exam. I'm not going to spend too much time on each one, but it will be uploaded into your executive content so that you can read it. What we know at this point, this data is fresh, it only came out to us last week, so there are still some things we're looking at, but also what next steps we're planning on taking. So some background information for you, the Common Core was adopted in 2009, and it wasn't until 2014 that Quaker Town actually updated their maps to match those more rigorous standards. So we were a little late to the game to start with. We only really started updating our curriculum to match just one year before the new rigorous PSSA came out in 2015. So we certainly, along with most districts in Pennsylvania, saw a big dip in the 2015 testing, but what we would hope is that since then, we would see a positive trajectory, and we are in some areas, but there's some other places where we have identified areas of need. One of those areas of need was math at the elementary level, so we are in our second year of using Eureka Math, and the second area was in our elementary RILA curriculum, which I just brought to you a couple weeks ago for use for next year. If you look at our student performance on previous winter tests, so the NWA given in the fall, the winter, and the spring, the winter data has been an incredibly strong predictor of how our students will perform on the PSSA. As you're going to see in a few minutes, and I share this with the Education Committee, and Dr. Harner and my father-in-law both share a saying, and that saying is that bad news doesn't get better with age. So I am here, not sharing positive news, unfortunately, on some of our data, but I do have some ideas on how we can, we can hopefully disrupt that change and make it that this is not a predictor of how we're going to do, and that I come back to you in the summer with much stronger results than what we're seeing here. You'll see on the right-hand side, I just kind of shared with you some information. Right now, the RILA resources we are using in elementary are the 2011 and 2014 additions, so we'll be looking at new resources for that. And in terms of the high school RILA, we are in our eighth year, there was some question about whether it's eight or nine, because we did a pilot year, but eighth year of spring board, and we'll be looking at bringing new resources to them in the next two years. So there's a little diagram down there, which is not too large, I can't really, I feel like using my computer and trying to stretch it to make it bigger, but trying to help remember to keep the instructional core at the focus of that. And so what the instructional core really is, is a triangle that explains that the interplay between the teacher's knowledge and skill, the content, and the resources that you provide, and what the student is doing in the classroom, that's what we need to keep our focus on. So the actual tasks, what we're asking our students to do, is where we need to really put our time and effort, so that we make sure that that triangle is strong, each corner of that triangle has to be working in unison. So we just try to keep that in mind as we're moving through this. So what is the MAP test? It's called the Measures of Academic Progress. In this district, we give it to all students in grades three through eight for reading, language usage. In math, we also give it in the spring to our second graders, and that's part of the data we use to determine placement in Math 3+. And we do not give it to students who are taking algebra or geometry. So even if they're in seventh or eighth grade, they have a different curriculum, so we don't give it to them, so I just want to make sure you have that information. Okay, so, we'll start here with NIDIG. I just want to explain how you can read these charts, and then, like I said, I'm just kind of gonna go through them rather quickly. The way that data is typically compared in Pennsylvania is grade to grade, not cohort to cohort. So what you're looking at here is how our students actually performed in third grade in 2016, 2017, and then how they are projected to perform in 2018. So those would be the three different colored bars. If you want to look at the data based on cohort, you could look from left to right by color. So what I mean by that is you could look at how the students did as third graders in RILA, for example, on the blue bar. So they were at 76. The next year, as fourth graders, they're now that red bar, so you can see they made a nice increase. This year, they're at 71, so a little bit of a decrease. So it's important to look at it in both ways, because if you look at it on the surface, you could say, "Okay, last year, our fifth graders, they performed 71%, were proficient or advanced, and this year, 71% are proficient and advanced." So not the growth that we'd like to see, but, you know, performing at the same level, and that's how it will be reported, you know, when the newspapers do their report. However, we also want to look at that cohort data and try to see what happened to the students who were at 87% proficient last year and now 71% proficient advanced this year. So that kind of gives you a little bit of a look. You'll see overall, on almost all of these charts, unfortunately, the yellow line is much lower than the blue or the red lines. So I'll just kind of click through them. Sure.
So, is this the 2018 projected, is that based on the three tests that they're taking so far this year? So their progress, where you expect them to land?
So they actually, NWA actually did a linkage study where they spent a lot of time going through questions, samples, seeing how students performed, and they've provided that to us. They are actually the ones to determine what the proficiency level is. So they're reporting to us this number. So it's not me going through and trying to decide which students I think will be proficient or advanced, it's actually the reported number from the company.
So there's a chance, maybe we could still close?
That's my last slide, I'm saving it for the end, I'm ready for it. But yes, there is, this is by no means set in stone. It is every year, basically, a predictor of how we end up doing within a few percentage points, so it's a strong correlation, but I would, I would like to see us make some changes so that's not the case this year. Quaker Town Elementary saw some fairly significant drops, particularly in math, but if you look at their cohort, they were coming from a lower percentage, so while the bar is certainly not where we wanted to be, it actually wasn't as drastic a drop as some of our other buildings.
One thing that, if I can add, just one little footnote on Quaker Town Elementary, the difference in the poverty index is huge for them compared to, say, Chumbauer'sville or PAF. So you have students going, coming to the table with a, at a disadvantage, however, high expectations and quality instruction, all that can overcome a lot of that, but just for the newer board members who don't know the numbers, Quaker Town Elementary is over 50% of the students coming with free and reduced meals below the poverty line, whereas the district's average is 34%.
In terms of overall, general things that we're recognizing, our RILA scores are holding, which is good news, we just don't seem to be making the growth that we'd like to see. So basically, even in areas where our students are performing well achievement-wise, they don't appear to be making a full year's worth of growth in a year's worth of academic time, which is concerning. So certainly, we want to have a high number of students being proficient and advanced, but even those advanced students, we want to see them moving along at a pace that's at least one year of growth, and so we're having some struggle with that. Richland did have some really positive growth in their RILA curriculum, so I did want to highlight that, they, in their RILA area. They are working really hard, and we do have some classrooms that are actually piloting our new reading program. Now, I don't know that that has anything to do with it yet, because we've just started that, but I think that the connection that those teachers have with their reading specialists is something that could be one of the reasons why we're seeing some growth there. To Hickon Valley is one of those buildings where even though we're seeing a drop, the drop between cohorts is not as drastic, which is a nice thing to see. It means that we are trying to keep those students on pace, we're now just not in a place where we're moving them forward at an accelerated rate. Chumbauer'sville does have a place for celebration, so I want to make sure I point that out. Their fifth grade RILA has increased, and fairly substantially, so they are performing at the same place that the fifth grade has traditionally, but they're actually coming from a cohort that was lower before, so that's certainly an area of celebration. So our sixth grade center data, you'd have to go back to the buildings, and they don't provide an aggregate of how all fifth grade students did. I did contact them today to see if I could get that for you, if anyone's interested, but we don't have cohort data on these slides for these students, but I'm not sure that we necessarily need it. I think it's probably alarming enough that the percentages are where they are, so we'll be working on that. Now, one of the interesting parts about Strayer Middle School is that the data that I included for the red and blue bars is all of our students, so whether they attended Strayer or Milford, they are included in this data, and you can see that the information is pretty consistent with how things have been in the past. So the students are still performing at the same level, even though they're now in a building together. We're not seeing any drastic drops or increases, there really isn't much change, which I think in some regards, of course, I'd like to see more positive, is a positive, because there was a lot of concern about whether or not putting all the students in the same building was going to have a detrimental effect on their scores, and based on this limited data, it doesn't appear to be, so I think that's a positive. I think that it's also important to note that for the math section of Strayer, I have made my own assumptions about who and, who will be proficient, because as I said, we don't give the test to any algebra or geometry students. So what I did was basically assume that every student who is in algebra or geometry, because that's an accelerated class, will end up being proficient, and I added that percentage to the percent who actually were proficient. So as an example, of the students who actually took this math test in eighth grade, 7% showed that they could be proficient or advanced. So I believe that the other 43% of our class who is taking an accelerated math class will also be proficient or advanced, so on the bar graph, I used the number 50. I didn't think that using 7 would be an adequate representation, because we were taking, you know, almost half of the class out of the equation, which I don't think is fair to the representation of the teachers in that building. So, just so you know, those aren't exact numbers, but that's how I arrived at those numbers. Okay, so what we know. We know that the winter test is a strong predictor, as I already said, and we know that we can pretty much expect these results at the end of the year unless something changes. I'm a big believer that the reason why this test has been a predictor in the past is because we didn't change our instruction. So we gave the test, we got an answer, and then it worked out to be the same. I think we have a really good opportunity right now to look at student-level data, and I know a lot of our teachers are doing that, and principals are working with teachers, we just need to make sure that's happening everywhere, to target instruction and really progress monitor our students on how they are attaining those skills. And as I added on the slide here, we have a chance to do these things for not only this year, but moving forward. If we can change our current practices, we should be able to see a positive trajectory. So from my perspective in our office, our next steps, and I know this is like, you know, rule 101 of doing PowerPoints, don't put so many words on a slide, but we need to make sure that parents are still receiving copies of their child's reports. So it's been about two years that we've been providing very detailed reports to parents after each administration, we want to make sure we keep doing that, so that they can see exactly how their child's performing. We also are going to be working with principals and teachers to provide more targeted support based on this data to the classrooms who need it. So we're at a point now where we can see that... So we're at a point now where we can see that, you know, maybe a 4th grade math class in a certain building really needs the help. Well, then we're going to put that math specialist there more time so that they can work with them. Also, my office has identified 6 areas of focus need that multiple buildings could benefit from. So we are going to be shortly announcing 6 different professional development sessions that teachers could choose to come to, to target their instruction to those pieces that we've identified as high-need areas. So hopefully, we're hopeful that they'll take advantage of those opportunities. We're also looking at increasing and continuing the work that we've been doing with collaboration. So collaboration between teachers, between our office, principals, the instructional coaches, to really do some job-embedded professional development, to help with planning, to help with differentiation, in-class assessment, so that we can get some positive growth here. And like I said, I want to make sure you're aware that this is happening in some buildings and in some classrooms. We just want to make sure that we get a wider reach so that we can help. We also want to make sure that our standards are actually being taught and taught at the appropriate level of rigor. So we know that we have increased the rigor through the curriculum. What we don't know is whether or not the instructional practices in everyone's classroom has kind of caught up to that. So we have to make sure that we're in classrooms, that we're working with teachers and helping them to gain whatever knowledge they need to make sure that they're teaching those standards. And if it's not a teacher issue, but a classroom issue, a resource issue, that we can get in there and support them with whatever they need. And then lastly, we did purchase a link between Study Island and NWA, where every child, when they take the NWA test, it gets linked right into their Study Island, exactly what lessons they should be working on and what they need for growth. And it appears, based on our Study Island usage, that that's not being used. And so we really want to target classrooms where we can help support by having that pathway that's already set up for them with exactly what they need being used in a more meaningful way. So, sure.
Can you elaborate for me, Study Island and its purpose?
Sure.
Pretend I don't know what it is.
Okay. Just saying. So Study Island is a web-based tool. It's a pay-for service that originally was created just for basically high-stakes testing preparation. So it was based on all of the standards. You could go through it 3rd grade. You can earn little ribbons that tell you that you've learned all the material. And in theory, if you go through that, when you go to take the test, PSSA or the Keystone, you would have mastered that content. They have since kind of grown into a different company that offers, you know, different, not just for our PSSAs. You can do science, you can do social studies. But typically, in our district, we pretty much still use it as focused preparation. But we don't use it only for the test. Teachers are using it and embedding it in their classrooms so that if they're teaching a particular topic, they would assign that topic to their students for extra practice in Study Island. So we've kind of taken it for what it was originally intended for and tried to make it into more of a learning tool than a testing tool. But what happened is NWA realized that a lot of districts were purchasing this, and so they made this little pathway where they take the data, upload right from NWA, put it into Study Island, and then it makes an individual pathway for each child. The thing that I really like about that is, and, you know, I have my own children, so they use Study Island in their district, and a lot of times, you know, my daughter would come home and she would have 2 sections of Study Island to do, and she would finish them in 3 minutes because she already knew the material. But the whole class was assigned that task. So I really like that what the students are assigned in this pathway is aligned to what they need to work on. It's much more individualized.
So it's at home as well as in class they're using this?
I do believe that most teachers assign it as homework as well as doing it in a classroom. I know in the elementary school, I see it often as a center activity. So they might be, the teacher might be working with a small group of students. Another group of students might be doing some independent reading, and then the third group is working on the computer. At the middle school, I hear that it's mostly homework, but I would imagine that there's probably some teachers who use it in class as well. And for the high school, we actually purchased their Keystone program, which is what we use as remediation for the students who didn't pass the Keystone exams, which is a report I will present to you maybe next time.
So is Study Island kind of like the program that my son uses in 3rd grade? He comes home and he does?
So that's probably Big Brains. Well, now it's called Imagine Math. So not really. They sort of serve 2 different purposes, but it's the same type of idea. It's a computer program. You can play games. It does, yep.
Dr. Hoffman, I have a question.
So many questions, yes.
Typically, I mean, I know you guys spend a lot of time with the curriculum, developing it and implementing it. Is there a quote-unquote "standard," I'm going to say lag time, that would be typical for this type of a change where, okay, you know, it might take 3 years before you really begin to see the results of the rigor in the curriculum? Is that a fair statement, or can you talk to that a little?
It is, sure. So typically, 3 years, 2 to 3 years is a good amount of time to determine whether or not something is working. What we are always doing is trying to make changes as we go, which has positives and negatives, right? So it has a positive because we've identified something isn't working. We're going to change it. We're not going to wait 3 years. But then you don't actually know which, you can't quantify which thing was the thing that made the difference because you're constantly making changes. I think the benefits of making the change immediately far outweighs knowing exactly which thing, you know, triggered the change. But that could be debated, I guess. I think that one of the things that we know is that whenever you do an all-out rollout, so you don't roll up, you just say, everybody's in a new program, there's always going to be gaps. And we are certainly finding that with Eureka. I think any of our elementary teachers would tell you that they are teaching much more rigorous lessons. The expectations for students are higher than they have been in some classes before. We hear it a lot in 3rd grade, that the 2nd graders who had a program before Eureka or 1st grade, maybe when they're getting to 3rd grade, they're actually spending a lot of time just teaching them how to be math students, before they can actually get to those skills. So I think certainly, there is a time that we need to make these adjustments. But I also know that, as most people who know my passion, we can't wait, right? Every year, there's a group of students in front of us, and we owe them the very best that we can to get those skills in front of them. So that's why I'm trying to get into the classrooms as much as possible to do some of that job-embedded right in their professional development on the spot. You know, we'll plan with you. We'll co-teach with you. We'll look at your lessons afterwards, whatever they need to really reach those students.
Then your bullet point, so you have ensure standards are being taught with the appropriate level of rigor. Do you think that it's being taught, Eureka, with the appropriate level of rigor?
I think that in some classes, yes. And, I mean, all of these statements are generalizations. So I personally have not been in every classroom in this building. So I'm not going to make a statement that says that all teachers are or all teachers aren't. But I know that one of my next steps is to make sure, I can say with certainty, that every standard that we need to meet is addressed in our curriculum map. I can assure you that. What I can assure you is that it's happening in every classroom, and so that's why that's one of my next steps.
Are the teachers adequately trained in the curriculum and delivering it?
So I would say that, well, you know, last year, I brought to you some data on the number of teachers who participated in our summer work.
It was dismal.
And so I don't think so. I don't think that every teacher, now, it's not just because they didn't come. There are certainly teachers who did not come to our training, who could have done this.
What percentage came, do you remember offhand?
I don't. What percentage came to our summer training? Yeah, it was less than 30%. But I would say that there are some teachers who didn't come who have done a lot of preparation on their own. I don't want to make it that the only way they could be prepared is to have come to one of our sessions. But even if you take half of the people who didn't come and say they did it on their own.
It's still a big gap. I was just looking, because, you know, on your 3rd bullet point, you bring up professional development sessions offered to teachers of identified need, and they have no requirement to participate in that.
That's correct. Right. So we will offer them. We've spent a lot of time targeting the areas that we think will have the highest impact, but yes, they would be offered after school.
You can see why as a board member and as a citizen, that would be something I have an issue with, is that, you know, that you're given an assignment to roll out a program and not required to go through the steps to be proficient in applying that, you know, to the education of the students. And you can see why that's, I would have an issue. I think anyone would, where you say, okay, doing your job is voluntary. And so I'm just curious, you know, we have these 9 days that are allocated throughout the course of the year for personal professional development that are, they're unaccountable. And do we have no avenue to make them accountable, to, you know, have objective goals for any of the educators that are not showing proficiency in the execution of the program?
That's correct.
I think it's a generalized statement. Let me ask a question. Is there anything that was affected by changes that we're doing district-wide that would explain some of these declines that we're seeing and not simply that we're saying that teachers aren't educated? I don't know that that is a...
Well, I certainly didn't mean to imply that our teachers aren't educated.
I'm asking that from a big-level view. There's been a lot of changes. There's been shuffling of teachers. There's teachers that are in classrooms that possibly haven't taught that class the year prior. So we've affected a lot of that, guys. So my question is, does that play in these numbers that we're seeing today as opposed to?
It certainly can. I think that it can. We'd have to look at the teacher-level data to determine how many of the teachers are teachers who have moved assignments or, you know, those kind of things. And our team can certainly do that, as can the teachers. But I think as a generalization, the numbers wouldn't be where they were if it wasn't a greater issue. Like, it's not just 1 or 2 teachers whose classes are having lower performance. It's across the board in every grade level in every building.
Like we were talking about in the retreat, the accountability becomes an issue again. You know, it rears its head here when making professional benchmarks becomes optional. And that's, and I guess our hands are tied there, but it's frustrating to see.
Maybe I can couch it in a different term, just because that could be taken a little bit confrontational if I was sitting in the teacher's shoes. I always look at it from, you know, if something's not working in a group that I'm leading, that's my fault partly. Like, what's wrong? Are we not providing the training? Are we not providing the opportunity? You know, I don't know what it is, but, you know, and that's something I know you're planning to get into. Is there a decent feedback loop for teachers to know that what I'm doing is effective? I mean, I've never been in a club, well, I've taught Java programming. I mean, I've taught short courses, but I've never taught, you know, in a school, so I don't know. You know, this is a mid-year feedback loop, and I think you said the teachers get to see all this data.
They do. They get individual reports for their students.
Because I would think, as a professional, and if you see graphs of my student body not getting the material or not doing well on something, you know, I'd probably be concerned about it and be looking for support, or I would hope. So I would hope there's some receptive folks to, you know, like, I would sit them all in a room and say, all right, math people or RILA people, here's the data. Let's talk. What can we do? I don't know how teachers work, but I know if it was in my business, I'd be like, all right, developers, we're shipping crap out the door. And I'm not saying it's crap, but, right, we got bugs, we got problems, we got people complaining, we're not meeting. What can we do about this? This is not to be ignored, right? This has to be solved, and it's a group effort. It's not a union thing. It's not an administration thing. It's not a Dr. Hoffman thing. It's spent a lot of money to educate kids. What, you know, where are we failing? What kind of ideas can we bring up from the ground, you know? It's not just for you to solve. It's not just for us, certainly not us to solve. So anyway, that's, you know, that's how I would approach it, is what feedback, you know, what's going on.
So thank you for that. I hope that that's the work of the building principal in talking to their teachers to move things forward. I don't have the luxury to be able to pull all the math teachers together in a room to talk to them. It just doesn't, it doesn't work that way. I mean, at our next curriculum day, we could try to do it, but it's kind of like, we're already at the PSSA time by then. But I think that the hope is that as we've worked with, as our office has worked with building principals on their coaching and feedback of their teachers and what they're seeing in the classroom, in most of the buildings, they have changed the model that they're using for their data team meetings so that they are really looking at real-time data with their teachers and moving through, that the idea would be that this would bring about a sense of urgency. I certainly hope so. I know that when I saw it, I had a real sense of urgency. So my hope is that when teachers looked at their data, they felt the same way. We would love if teachers would look at their data and, you know, feel that sense of urgency and reach out for support. That doesn't always happen, so that's why part of the steps are for us actually to be going out and trying to meet with them.
So what do you think the linchpin is? What's priority 1 for getting your plans going?
I think that it's that 4th bullet down. I think it's just working together as members of my team, the principals, the teachers, and the coaches, so that everyone understands that this is something that we need to move forward with, that each one of us has a piece of the puzzle. So, you know, my office has a lot to offer. The teachers have a lot to offer. They know their students. The principals have a lot to offer in their building. And if we all can work together, we can move some of this forward. I think that's where we have to start. But every person involved has to come to the table ready to move it forward. And we haven't done, to my knowledge, I mean, I've been in the district 8 years, but I haven't been in this position that long. So to my knowledge, there hasn't really been an opportunity for what was the curriculum office and teachers to have a conversation that was two-way. And so I think we really need to be having that hearing from them. What do you see in your data? Actually, asking them, what do you see in your data? What help do you need to move those students forward? We hear a lot from teachers that they don't feel like they have the flexibility to adjust their instruction. So kind of getting past that to explain that they do have the flexibility to adjust their instruction so long as they're teaching the standards. That's a message that, you know, we need to get out there a little bit better.
One last question. Is there anything from this board that you would need that we can assist with in order to accomplish that goal? And not that we, you know, want to, but is there anything that we should be thinking about doing? Any recommendations that we could discuss of ways that we can help?
Well, I'll say first, I appreciate that offer. I really do. I think that the best support that we've had is your trust when I bring something to the Education Committee that I'm asking for something. I've done my research on it, and I value it, and I think it's going to work. So that continued support is certainly something that we could benefit from. And I think just as you talk to community members who have concerns about, you know, what their students are doing or aren't doing, as you talk to teachers who have concerns, I feel like I'm pretty approachable. People call me, you know, they have things to say. And I would just ask for your support in having them reach out if they have a question. Instead of having the rumor mill go around, just reach out and ask, and we'll try to solve it. That's probably the best thing I can ask for.
And I appreciate that. I think that one of the things, it's, you know, whenever you look at data, declining data is always one of those hit you in the gut type of moments. And so, you know, there's 2 ways of looking at it. We can either wallow in it and be upset and, you know, kicking things when they're down, or we can look at it as an opportunity to grow.
That's right.
And improve. And I think that's really what we need to do, is find that. And I hope that the implementation of some of these strategies work. But I would also ask that if you're noticing that they're not, and there's something bigger that the board needs to do from our standpoint that we're approached beforehand, I think that that's, and we can...
Thank you.
Not that we can physically go in a classroom and help you out, but, you know, maybe provide you some support from an administration high level.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate that. Yes.
One other technical sort of question. The first bullet always gives me a pause when I think about detailed reports being sent to people that might not have asked for them.
I know I say that a lot.
So can I just answer that?
I'm trying to ignore the ones that I don't care about. But my only point is, I have no idea what those look like, but if they look like a ream of, you know...
It's 1 page.
Okay. Do they have like red, green, you know?
It does. It's a color document that shows how your student's progressing against a normed reference number. It does now also feed into the comments on our new report card. So we actually tried to, now we aren't reporting all those categories on the actual report card. We're attaching their report from Big Brains, and we're attaching the NWA report so that they can have the whole picture of their child without having it in all different kinds of places. So we were thoughtful about that.
Good feedback.
Yes. And the reason why this is, normally, I don't think for next steps, you would say, continue something you're already doing, like, it's kind of assumed. But we actually did try to collect some data and move forth whether or not these reports were valuable. Teachers actually said that they were valuable. Teachers actually said that they were valuable in having conversations with parents when they did conferences, or, you know, just if a parent had a concern in an IEP meeting, to be able to actually point to the data was helpful, and the parents felt like they could read them, that it was easy to understand. So, we're going to move forward with those. Thank you.
If I can have a last comment on the topic, unless someone else? We have actionable data, things where we know our students are, and we can act on it, and that's what we're after, and it's going to be a team effort.
Have they, have you gotten any indication from the teaching staff what it would take to improve participation in the curriculum development? Because that seems like it's a key component.
We have, go, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry.
You-
I was just trying to ask him quietly if he wanted me to answer, but then I-
Yeah, go ahead. I'll let him answer.
How about an answer from each?
So, some of the feedback that we have received is not something that we feel comfortable moving forward with. So, for example, one of the pieces of feedback is to do it during the school day or during their contracted time. And from my perception, or from my perspective, I really like to have the teachers in front of the students as much as possible during those days, and we have found that pulling teachers to do work has had different levels of effectiveness. But if you need to pull, let's say, all of the fourth grade teachers for a training, pulling all the teachers in fourth grade on one day is not practical. So, you wouldn't be able to get subs, you would, you know, those kind of things. So, looking at some of the ways that the union has come back with in terms of how it would work, really aren't things that we're able to accommodate right now. We did have some brief conversation, Erin Alexa, who's our realer supervisor, and working with some of the members of, of the teaching union, to determine how we might better roll out the realer curriculum for people to attend. They suggested that we do them the two days after school ends and the two days before school starts. We did do that last year, so I'm not certain that that'll be a difference, but if that's what they've asked for, then those are the days that we'll use, certainly.
The most precious resource that we have to, to make a change is time, and it's all contractual time. So, we'll have to, we'll have to, that's the limitation, and we're, we're working on that, and, and I'm sure we'll come up with a solution. And we know we got a lot of work to do, and, and we'll work as a team.
Quick question about the professional development. I'm curious, does every district do that different? I'm not that familiar with the, like, unaccountable time that you're referring to. I've heard that before. But is that different district by district? Do we have any best practices from other districts we've explored?
Well, most districts, if you go and check it out and you go online, or you ask them, ask them for their, their curriculum, their, their, their systems. Most districts don't have a system. They buy a program, and they say, "Here's the textbook, here's the program." Well, textbooks for Pennsylvania, as an example, are designed for the bigger states, and as I see Mitch nodding his head, he understands that having been a teacher for thirty-some years, that, that, they'll, they'll build textbooks and programs that are aligned with a particular state, what they're teaching out there. The National Common Core, Pennsylvania Common Core, has helped that out tremendously when it comes to having better resources and programs that are aligned to the states, our state standards. You go to a district, I know I have one of our teachers who's, has just became a board member in, in his own district, a home district, and it's exciting, had a very lengthy conversation. Do they have a curriculum? High-performing district or relatively high-performing district in, in our neighborhood, they don't have a curriculum. Well, when, in 2014, we had not, when I got here, we had not adjusted to the Common Core yet, and we didn't, definitely didn't have curriculum maps. We bought programs. We bought things off the shelf, make a decision, pilot a couple, and all that. First, you got to build your maps, your curriculum maps, and then find programs that fit those maps, so we have instruction. Then you got to get instruction aligned to those maps. And that, that linkage right now is probably the weakest link between instruction and the maps, getting, because of your changing of paradigm of a teacher's day and what they do. So, then the limitation of getting teachers to, and our team to that point is getting them to change what they're doing, and we don't have the, a lot of the time to do that. But we're going to get it done. Thank you, thank you, sir. That ends the superintendent's report.
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Hoffman. That was a very good presentation. We would normally, at this point, have a student representative report, but from what I understand, our student representative was enjoying the Eagles parade.
As were all the high school students.
Mark, that is excused.
The entire senior class was missing today. I'm sorry.
All righty. We'll move on to the board committee reports, and we'll start with the Education Curriculum Committee. Mr. Anderson?
All right. Well, the first thing we did was we started looking at a new textbook for dance, history of dance. It seemed pretty interesting, about French. They're going to offer it, but they're not sure if it will fly, because there may not be enough interest in it. And it's going to be offered initially through the middle school, if it, if it actually does fly. And we also talked about the panorama survey about school climate, and that was the main things. So, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Next is the Facilities Committee. Ms. Mitchell?
It's gone. So, we, we actually canceled the last Facilities Committee. However, I believe we were going to take time for any updates from the administration.
We will have all the items from the committee from last week. We'll have that on the agenda and roll right through them.
Sounds good. Okay. We'll have nothing else to report.
Next is the Nightig Elementary School renovation planning update. Mr. Harper?
This is our Facilities Committee, late to the game, and I think a lot of the members had the flu, and that's why we canceled, and I got that shortly after you guys canceled too. So, this is my first day back to work. So, Nightig Elementary renovation. So, we've had three meetings so far, and these are just the updates of that. Just go through them quickly. I believe the meeting minutes are posted in the board docs. The first meeting was our kickoff meeting. It was really to define the project, the project team and the meeting schedule. It was the administration that's on the team, is going to meet on a bi-weekly basis. It's the principal, select administrators, or architect and engineer. So, they're going to be meeting regularly, and we also are going to have inclusion of key stakeholders for their input at different periods of that process. We reviewed a broad scope of the project, like capacity, additions that'll be needed, program needs, so it includes parity that we talked about through the different processes of getting to this point, and also class sizes by grade, and how that's going to develop as we go through this planning process. We talked about constraints. The property's actually located in two municipalities. Part of the parcels there, one is Quakertown Borough, the other's in Richland Township, so that's a constraint that we have to work with as well. And we talked a little bit about parking, pickup drop-off issues. In our second meeting, we talked about some endangered species. You've probably heard about the bog turtle habitat, so that came up, and that was part of the planning with this, that as the development of the project goes along, you have to see if there's any endangered species habitats before you can do any kind of construction. We had to hire a consultant to go out and do a study, and results of that came out in the third meeting. So, we also looked at a preliminary sketch as part of that meeting as well. Schrader Group came up with a sketch so that we could see what are their thoughts based on the things that we told them, what we wanted to see in the building, parking, and different concepts that they had there. It was a first look for us. We talked about some design. So, a popular thing was looking at PAF and Trumbowersville, as they had pods. That seemed to be very good working for the schools and a model for building in the future, so we talked about that. Small group instruction areas. The scope of the project being that we're going to increase the capacity to 600 students from 400 and relieve some parent drop-off issues that we have right now. So, the parent drop-off actually backs up into the public. It creates traffic issues, blocks driveways and things. Mr. Godshock can attest to that, that they have regular complaints and issues with that. And just parking in general, and need for larger spaces, again, parity and capacity issues there for cafeteria and gym. In our last meeting, number three, confirmed that there are no bog turtle habitats on the space, so we're clear from that. There also was another endangered species for plants we need to look into to make sure that there's nothing else there that we're going to disturb and cause an issue with. In that meeting, we took a more detailed look at parking and drop-off routes, actually considered looking at entering the rear of the school from Erie instead of from Penrose on the front, so we could have a potential student drop-off in the back of the school. I believe we could load about 30 or 40 cars on-site if that works out that way. And that was another thing that we're looking into. Briefly touched on building systems. Our engineer's going to present pros and cons of various HVAC, lighting, electrical, network, technology. All those things were discussed. And the last thing we talked about, so Schrader Group does these elementary school construction projects across the state and the country, and we asked them, what are other school districts doing? How do we come to be the latest and greatest of what we're doing? We want to make sure we're on track with the most modern technology and things. So, they showed us a few plans of other schools that they did, and they suggested we go and visit some in the area that they've done. So, on the 15th, we're actually setting up a tour for up to nine people to go visit Phoenixville, one of their elementary schools that Schrader did, and Bristol Township. We're going to visit one of theirs and see how it works. So, we can actually talk to the people that are in those spaces, see how it works, get to ask them pros and cons, what they did like, and it'll be a good education experience for us. So, that's the renovation update, unless there's any questions on that. Okay. So, the next topic is Milford and Tahican Valley disposition. So, we talked about those buildings and being vacant, and our recommendation is that we should do demolition of those buildings. So, we had some initial numbers based on the appraisals, what's a demolition cost, and they were just generic numbers. So, what I did, I went and got ahold of a few demolition contractors and asked them to give us prices. They've only got one back so far from Haynes and Kibble House, so we have some good budget numbers to work with, some real-world numbers. So, Milford Middle School, they estimated to be 582,000 to demolish the building, the foundation. So, what you'd be left with is the building footprint. It would be no concrete, no structure. It'd be filled with dirt, seeded, straw, and left alone. That'd be the finished product. Same for Tahican Valley, 312,000 was their estimate. Those numbers are high numbers to think about, but those are the numbers we think we would expect to see. And we're actually looking for a motion from the board to actually advertise RFP so we can go out and bid these processes, because it doesn't commit you to anything except advertising costs. We need to go through the bid process, being the cost of those projects, so we can go out, get multiple bids, bring in the lowest responsible bidder, and we bring that back to you for a decision. Do you want to move forward or not at that point? Questions about that?
So, the, the recommendation is to go ahead with the demolition?
I think based on the, that's probably better answered by someone else up here because of the legislation potential?
One, there's two factors here. One, the, the one that I brought to the Facilities Committee, first off, was the, I don't, from, I'm not, don't recall the Senate bill or the House bill that will most likely come forward again this, this spring on charter school reform. And if you recall, on page 37, 38, they talk about charter schools having the first right of refusal. Having a charter school in our, in our backyard, in our front yard, would be not only impact us greatly, would impact districts with the 11, 12 districts, depending upon the Tahican Valley or Milford, because of the 10-mile radius, for, just for transportation, they could come from further away, but just for the 10-mile transportation thing. The, the other thing is that we have, may have buyers. I know the Facilities Committee is, recommendation is to retain the Milford property for future use, and I think that's a great, I, I support that. It's a strategic asset for moving forward in the future. Tahican Valley, however, is, is landlocked, you can't expand, it's not a large enough footprint to rebuild correctly on that lot.
All park, we're expected to get for those 1.4?
After, it was, Ms. Edwards, when a 1.7 was the-
Prior to the demolition.
Prior to demolition. So, it's about 1.3, 1.4 million dollars we could sell it for approximately.
Now, the, we don't know, we don't know what's going to happen with that legislation until it happens, and, you know, this is near a million bucks coming out of a budget that's, you know, three and change behind to start with. And what I'm going to ask the other board members to deliberate, because we don't have to pull the gun on using the charter school defense unless we need to, and what I'm going to ask the rest of the board to consider is that we, you know, actively try to sell Tahican Valley and make the demolition contingent of the sale, so you get a buyer and say, "Okay, now we'll demolish it," so we don't have to lay out that cash until, until we know that it's, a sale's pending. And then, from the proceeds from that, use that to, to the demolition for Milford, so we don't have to dip into fund balance or cash now. And one of the other people were asking about, a couple people mentioned, you know, liability with vandalism, and the, you know, liability insurance is relatively inexpensive, and, you know, if a building's going to be demolished, how, you know, how pressing is the vandalism of it prior to it happening? So, the, the way I'd like to, if possible, to see it go in a perfect world is that the sale for Tahican happens with a pending sale, have, you know, if it's contingent upon demolition, who knows? Your buyer might want the building, you know? And so, I, I would ask that we think in the mindset where the proceeds for the demolishment of the Milford building is going to come out of those proceeds versus our finance committee budget, if possible.
I'd also want to make sure that, you know, before Tahican Valley is knocked down, someone's going to go through there and buy all the stuff they can buy before we trash it, right?
It's, it's pretty limited. We, even with Milford, we've gone through, and the furniture, it's nominal value, the things inside of it, we've kind of repurposed and used things already, but the existing features of the building don't have that much value, to be honest.
You know, Tahican Valley is the one that, you know, I think we all agree that, you know, we couldn't care less if that property comes or goes, so, you know, I don't want to speak for that. But before they go in there and knock down the building, if there's copper, if there's these things that people pay money for, we need to be diligent and make sure that the committee maximizes on the amount of money that the school district can make off that property.
Okay.
Thank you. Oh, one more thing. Tahican Valley, basement?
Partial. There's a few, there's two basement, there's three basement areas, actually. There's a large storage area in the, in the newer wing, and there's a small boiler room, and there's a section under the kitchen.
Because clearly, there's exclusions in here, which you, you didn't point out. It's not the complete cost of demolition.
Right. There are permits and things like that, correct?
Is our staff prepared to fill that ourselves?
It would all be part of the demo. It would be all revealed in the bid. I mean, there's other options. You can see the, the quote that's posted in the content. So, there's options where you could lead the slab. There's a lot of options that could be taken here to reduce cost, but like you said, there's other things, permitting, and other things that need to be specifically addressed in the bid, yes.
Now, specifically, what you're asking us for is permission to go get an RFP?
Correct.
Is that something that we need to make a motion on, Mr. Garden?
Well, if I may, given, given what you just said and your suggestion, I think the first set would, would be that you, for Tahican Valley, that you put out an advertisement that we're going to sell the property.
Yeah, well, yeah, because obviously, we need to get moving on it.
And then, for the, for the other one, is, let's sit tight, let's just, just sit tight. Your intent is to demolish Milford, but we sit tight until we see, you know, what comes first.
Yeah, there's nothing pressing. Because we don't have to pull it-
There's nothing pressing, but we, we have had vandalism there, as I shared with you, and it's very sad what some people are doing and-
But that aside, pulling a $600,000 trigger is not, when we don't need to, is not the most prudent course of action from the finance committee.
So, I agree. Just for the community's understanding, is that there, there are folks that are breaking into Milford and destroying things like bathrooms and pulling fire pins on fire hydrants, and it's, it's a really bad display of, you know, sort of the best of Quakertown. I have to be honest, it was ugly to look at, and I don't care if it's an abandoned building, nonetheless. nonetheless, it's something that I think people have to understand as to what's going on, and so.
Isn't there a term for that, Mr. Garten, attractive menace?
Yeah.
Attractive nuisance, I think it's called.
Attractive nuisance.
Okay, I knew, I knew there's a, I knew there's a lower term, but, well, because it's just irresistible to some people, I guess, so.
So there'll be only one motion, is that you allow us to advertise for sale pending, and then with the demolition piece in there?
All right, how would I word that, Mr. Garten?
The appropriate motion would be to authorize the administration to take the necessary steps in accordance with the school code to offer Tahican Valley for sale.
Can Mr. President bring that motion forward? Is that okay now?
The board can choose to undertake it now if you choose to.
Okay. I make the motion, I, yeah, I'd like to make the motion that we authorize the administration to begin the proceeding of the sale of the Tahican Valley school under the language that Mr. Garten previously framed for us.
Okay, and Mr. Jackson seconded it. Discussion?
I think it's a great idea.
There you go.
You know my vote.
Just one quick question, then, this would, in effect, remove the need to vote on an RFP then tonight, correct?
Yeah, because I think the theory being that if you find a buyer...
Yes.
Who does not necessarily want to demolish the entire building, then you might be able to save the demolition cost.
Okay, now, the other question is, what does it do for getting an RFP for Milford? Do we want to have Kelly ready to pull the trigger, or do we want to wait for that as well?
That's a board decision.
My concern on that is, the, we're sending an RFP to try and sell the building, that doesn't mean it's going to happen now or quickly. And I don't like the idea of Milford, given the fact of what's occurred recently, sitting there for any length of time. Frankly, we know Tahican Valley has some tangible value, and we expect to sell it at some point, but I think Milford's got to come down with all due speed.
If I may, sir, I think we need to play out the, at least this springtime, the legislative session, and then seeing what's, what happens in the state Capitol, what's going to drive the actual train there. And as Dr. Sedikin had talked about, you're going to be spending six-hundred-thousand dollars when you really didn't, one, we can't afford that right now, it would come out of our fund balance.
I mean, if, if the district is comfortable having it there in what has happened recently and the possibility of it happening again, then, you know, take all due diligence to prevent it, but at the same time, you know, just saying.
Yes, sir.
So, but it does, there's no harm in getting RFPs, right?
No.
Well, other than you're wasting people's time, so I would vote...
Well, no, no, but what I'm thinking is, I mean...
If we're not intending to do it anytime soon, why put people through the false hope of getting a bid? So I'm, as a fellow businessperson, I'd say, don't go out for an RFP, that's...
Which is why I asked the question that I did.
There's a nominal cost, too, I don't know what it costs Alice to just go through the whole process, there's, it's going to cost you two, three thousand dollars, maybe ten, just to go through the paperwork and the advertising.
The bid package would take...
What's a turnaround time? Like, when you put out an RFP for a project like that, what's the turnaround time?
It's a, it's a three-week advertisement, and from that point, opening the bids the following week, about a month. To develop it like they were talking about, that could take a month or so. Come up with the bid specifications.
Yeah, so I would be inclined to have one ready, because the thing is, you know, in a business, especially project-oriented one, you line them up into the future, you know, this year's project, six months from now, a year from now. So if we have a, you know, RFP that has a window of, you know, ninety-day guarantee, one-hundred-and-eighty-day guarantee, one-hundred-and-three-sixty-five, as long as they know going in, the mindset of the administration, having ducks in a row is never a bad thing.
No, and I don't disagree, I think, my only question was, I think this number was much higher than was given in the past, and so it would be really nice to know better numbers.
That's why we want an RFP now.
Well, I thought we were talking about not doing, that's why I was arguing for...
Yeah, no, I'm saying, I'd like to, no, I'm saying that if it's going to take a couple months before we're even brought back a decision to the board, that's a lag time that we might not want to be faced with down the road, so being ready to say, yep, that RFP, let's enact it now, then they can get right to work, because there'll be a lag time from the time we say go to before guys can show up on the job.
Then we're in agreement, that's what I was saying, I didn't want to wait on the RFP, because these numbers are much...
Okay, so now, the next motion...
Thousand dollars more than we told them.
Well, now, the demolition...
Want the demolition, then?
The demolition won't happen, yeah, the demolition...
So when are you supposed to bid for something that may or may not ever happen? And how long is my bid supposed to be good for, Mr. Garten?
Well, it's just, the bids are only good for sixty days.
Exactly, it's a ridiculous request to make of a business. If you put a date in there...
Well, no, Dr. Sedikin was simply...
You can demolish it in sixty days, otherwise, don't go put somebody through the wringer to make a stupid bid.
But Dr. Sedikin, I thought was just asking that we prepare the documents and don't let it out to bid. I'm confessing, was, were you...
I want to know how, how much of the groundwork we are capable of doing now to expedite the process when the time comes.
It's things to me, and I'm not speaking for the administration or the board, but you can use this time to develop your specifications and your bid documents, so when you make a decision, you can then advertise the bid, and you'll be able to open bids in thirty days.
Okay.
So that you'll, you'll, you'll make up the preparation time, so you'll have a shorter window if you choose to go there.
Okay, so if we have that going on, that's about, that'll take us more or less into the two-to-four-month go-to-settlement from the time we have an offer on the building for that time, so is, so I would recommend that we consider lining that component up, and actually, when we get a contract on Tahican Valley, starting the RFP project for getting that going, so as soon as we go to settlement, we can begin and do sequence the demolition of Milford, and that's prepared, does that make sense?
Yeah, we have on, on the agenda tonight, under the fiscal consent agenda, we're discussing having the RFP done, we can change that motion to simply begin to prepare the RFP. We can instruct...
That makes the most sense, given that, like, as Mr. Kern said, if there is a sixty-day window, then it would be, you know, because then you have to go through the whole process again after the sixty days?
Yes.
So that would be, there would be no point in that redundancy.
The other factor is that sometimes bidders won't bid more than once. If you don't approve a bid the first time, then they don't want to go through the process again.
Right, and we don't need a...
If you're serious, you shouldn't put it out to bid.
And we don't need a motion to start preparing, right?
You could just instruct Mr. Harper to begin that process.
Are we okay as a board, so duly instructing him to...
I'd personally tend to be more just in time, like, if we ask you now, if we ask you in six months, when we actually, so that's my only concern, is there's a lot of things that you can choose to do, and if we direct them to do something now that's going to sit dusty for six months, in my mind, that's a, you know, I would rather do it just in time, that's my personal approach to these sorts of things.
I don't know, as far as what we're talking about in the way of a demolition, is just getting the RFP together the way you want it to, I wouldn't see that that would change drastically from now to six months from now, even a year from now, would that...
The only point is, there's a risk that we never ask for it, and it's a risk that you're wasting time, that's all. Versus, what's the rush? Why do you have to do it? You know, my only point is, it's not the most burning issue in front of the board is for Kelly Harper to create an RFP for some demolition that may happen sometime in the future, right? I mean, it's just like...
I don't, I, look, it's getting childish, what we're asking for, I want, what I was hoping for was, from a financial standpoint, to know what real numbers we're going to be talking about in a financial budget in which we're going to be growing down here in a couple months. This is much higher than we projected. If it comes to a point where we need to pull the trigger, I would like to know what that number's going to look like. Unfortunately, I agree, just in time's great, but sometimes a little preparation, so that we're not scrambling at the twenty-third hour.
Why isn't this preparation? Why isn't this the number? It says you don't like it.
Well, the numbers that were given to the Finance Committee just a month ago were, like, three-hundred-thousand to tear it down, so it was just a pick of the air, I guess, right?
Are you referring to Tahican Valley or Milford? Because if there's two different numbers...
Milford, I think it was like three-fifty to tear the building down.
Right, they were both based on appraisals, generic numbers.
They were astronomically lower than what we're talking about here, so it would give us just a better understanding of the bigger picture, and I don't want to waste anybody's time. I'm not asking to waste anybody's time.
It's just nuanced, the other numbers were based on the appraisal value and just random, you know?
Right, square footage.
Yeah, yeah.
This is a real, more, this is a real...
All right, so ballpark, we're looking around six-hundred grandish, I guess, at the end of the day, and so we'll hit that project later, so if you don't mind doing whatever you feel is appropriate to be ready for, whenever the sale of Tahican Valley becomes imminent, I think that would be appropriate.
I think that's a reasonable request.
We'll do, we'll develop the documents, and when you're ready, we'll be ready to put them out.
Okay, thank you. Now, we still have a motion that is up.
Quick, yes, so I'm sorry to belabor the point, I want to ask about the motion on the table, which is the sale?
Yes.
Correct? I'm not sure if this is a question that can be answered, but my concern is that if we enter into an agreement, we're not going to be done with Tahican Valley until, I'm not sure when, it's not going to be the last day of school, Tahican Valley and the property will belong to us for some length of time thereafter, yet are we talking about entering into an agreement of sale at this time to sell it to some party that we're both going to agree to at a future date? And if the legislature does, in fact, come through with a bill that allows first right of refusal to a charter school, will that contract be invalidated because it hasn't been executed yet?
Well, a couple things, the contract portion is finding the buyer, and finding a buyer that's going to enter into terms that are going to meet the district's needs. If you enter into an agreement, there'll be some contingencies, obviously, as a buyer, you're going to do all your due diligence, you know, are there wetlands, is there environmental issues? And lastly, you're going to need court approval to go to close it, but if there's an agreement in place, the legislation can't undo an existing agreement. The typical time here is finding the right buyer at the right price with the right terms. And, you know, you, there's no, that's the toughest part of this process.
The trick is, the building can't be for sale if that legislation passes.
Without saying it publicly, the answer's correct, it's got to be either under agreement or not being sold at this moment, if that legislation...
And there has been some interest, yes, Dr. Honor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
So we have a motion on the floor to proceed with advertising the sale of Tahican Valley Elementary School. We have a motion and a second, we've had the discussion, so it's time to vote.
Would it be the property of Tahican Valley, not the building?
No.
Everything, is it?
Everything, property, building, everything. If I misspoke, I'm sorry.
The buyer may decide they want to keep the building.
I don't think that's on the table for us.
Oh, well, then, you know, you need to decide then to spend the demolition money.
But that's the motion, that's the motion.
Is to sell with the demolition, you're saying?
No, no, no.
Well, to sell under the contingency that the buyer...
They get, they get.
I just thought the, there was a contingency.
The motion might be offered for sale, and then you can structure whether it's with or without the demolition, depending upon the interest you receive.
Correct.
When a buyer comes up, we have to vote on whether to accept their, their offer, and whatever goes with it, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so basically, all we're authorizing the board, or the administration to do now is go through the appropriate advertising and the legal hoops to begin the sale process, Tahican Valley, everything on there is for sale. And then, and then a buyer comes and says, hey, we got an offer, then we, as a board, say, okay, we accept that and the contingencies, then a judge approves it, and then we're clear to go to settlement. That's the sequence of events?
It's not that easy, but...
But, yeah, I'm, yeah, so I'm, right, okay.
Never that easy.
So we're voting to start that process?
Exactly.
And the motion is worded correctly to do so?
Yes.
Okay, let's do it.
Okay, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries and passes unanimously. Okay.
Next thing.
Next item is a Trumbowersville roof, just the recap of that, so we have a shingle roof on this building, we've had multiple leaks, they're getting worse, we had a consultant come out, they believe that the substructure of the roof wasn't installed correctly, and during the period since the last time we discussed it, I've been looking through my office, the business office has been looking through archives here, we're struggling to come up with good data to say what was construction supposed to be, found out that the building was originally specified for a metal roof, and some point in time, it was changed to a shingle roof, and it's hard to find out exactly why that happened, so we've gathered all the documents between my office and here, even Mr. Akmanowicz came for a tour, he's seen our storage room, it's a shower room converted to a storage area, so we're really going through our records, trying to clean things up, get them into a better state of what we have and where it is. So all the documents that we did find, we sent to Mr. Garten's office for review, he just got them earlier this week, so I believe they haven't had time to review them, but...
So we've got about an inch and a half of documents, so I'll get through it this week or early next week, and we'll have an answer for you before your next meeting.
Did you, Mr. Harper, did you find anything in the way of any type of a warranty or anything like that?
Yes, there is a warranty for the shingles, but again, it's the substructure that's what is believed to be failed.
Right.
And our consultant has said they need seventeen-hundred dollars to do a forensic study, tear off a ten-by-ten section of the roof, so they can see what was actually constructed under it, to see if that is, in fact, what's causing the shingles to fail. The shingles aren't expensive, we could get shingles for, and this is going on a twenty-year-old roof, and it's a thirty-year warranty, I believe, for the shingles, so it should have another ten years of life, but it's failing prematurely. That's what we're trying to have Mr. Garten identify for us, is there something that wasn't done properly, is there some other warranty we're not aware of, and that's what we're waiting for an answer for.
Okay.
Sometimes there are what's called roof processes, where the manufacturer actually is part of the warranty, chooses the installer, and it covers all aspects of it, so we need to find that out. And frankly, I think you ought to spend the seventeen-hundred dollars to do the forensic analysis, because you need to find out where the deficiency is. That's up to the board.
The substructure was built by the same company, possibly the shingles.
So Penn Builders was the general contractor, they hire a subcontractor to do roofing, which was Allied Roofing in, I believe, Hatfield, Hatboro? There's no one there by that name anymore, Penn Builders is certainly in business, I reached out to them to see if they have archives from twenty years ago, they're looking at data for us, they haven't come forward with anything helpful at this point, so we're using what we have to try to get leadway to maybe have some restitution for this.
We'll have Mr. Garten's response before the next meeting, I'll provide that to you all, but I, for Ms. Mitchell, I would recommend that we discuss it the next facilities meeting, and then bring a recommendation to the board about expenditures of the, to go do the work that Mr. Garten talked about, with, put it all together, package it, and bring it back to the board.
And I'd just like to say, for, again, for the public, the bottom line is the roof at Trumbowersville's failed, it's leaking tremendously, and the ask of us is about close to three-quarters of a billion dollars to replace the entire roof over there, so it went through the Facilities Committee, the Facilities Committee said, is asking, is there any warranty or any legal action that we could do, as this is a really relatively newer structure, and so to say that we're disappointed that we're at this point is an understatement, and so we're exploring all our options so that we can try to preserve at least some of the cash that we're going to outlay as a community for this building, so.
Are we going to replace it with shingles or metal?
So I did ask those questions, what's the, to do metal is substantially more, we're already at the seven-hundred-thousand-dollar estimate just to do a shingle replacement. I think it was close to two million to do metal, just because the way that the roof structure with all the fine cuts is a lot more time-consuming to put metal back in there.
I guess we're going with shingles.
I guess we're going with shingles. Yeah.
All right, I'm sure there was money savings there, it was probably the board at that time said, how can we save money on this project? That was offered up, but I can't find the documentation on that.
Okay. All righty.
So, next is the high school update, and so the rear sports complex, it's kind of come to a standstill right now because of weather, obviously, the ice and the cold over the last two months has slowed down the, so the carpet's basically down, some of the asphalt's down, bleachers are up, you'll see some field goals up, one of which is slightly crooked at the moment. So the next part of the process is finishing the turf, doing the infill, some paving, paving plants aren't open until it's warmer and they can do it at that time. There's a lot of grading remaining, they did a lot of rough grading of the grass fields, but that's all left at a point, it's not really manageable in this weather, so once the weather gets a little bit warmer, they'll continue to work on that. Expected completion of the project is April, May, so we'll have full use of the synthetic turf field, the grass fields will be off limits for a year, so that the turf can be established there. Next item is... Next item is the high school C-Wing roof leak. You got an email about that. A lot of questions have gone around. We're actively having roof leaks in that area of the building. More recently, it's become more severe, whether that's because of more precipitation or whatnot, or the leaks got worse. The hallways lined with buckets have become a slippery area. I know the administration's actually closed that hallway off to a certain extent. I believe today it wasn't even accessible, just because we don't want students falling and getting hurt in that area. Just wanted to bring it to the attention of everyone so you're aware of it. We actually, the short version of the story is, the, the project called for an overlay of the existing roof, not a total roof replacement. And when they got to a point, they saw that the pitch wasn't substantial enough for drainage. They did a change order. They added some pitch to it and then covered it with the membrane. Once the membrane was done, the solar panel people came in and they put panels on top of it. So that kind of makes it a little more difficult to troubleshoot leakage, but the roofers been in. And actually, today, both the roofer and the solar contractor were in troubleshooting, trying to find leaks. But there's a lot of ice on the roof, so they had trouble even at this point. So they are actively trying to solve it, but it's a problem they're dealing with on a regular basis, which is difficult. And if you haven't heard about it, I'd be surprised, because it is, it's an inconvenience and makes a new area of a brand-new building look bad.
Are they, each of them blaming each other so far?
To a degree, there's finger pointing that the roofer initially found some problems with the roof. They corrected it. And then they said, some of the areas we're seeing punctures and problems. We believe the solar people did it. They didn't want to keep doing work for free. At the same time, the solar people said, we didn't really do this. They're blaming us for things that never happened. So it's gone back and forth, but I think we're getting closer. Today, they believe they found a roof drain issue. That's slated to get repaired, once it's able to be repaired in a little bit warmer weather. We're still living with the leakage situation.
Okay.
Questions about that?
No, but I think it's, you know, an understatement to say, again, how many millions did this board spend on that project? And to be at this point is extremely difficult to swallow, so we need to make sure that, you know, we're taking the same actions that we would take if somebody made a mistake.
Understood, yep. That's what we're doing. We're trying...
It's not, the cost isn't burdened by this community.
Understood, yeah.
I presume that this roof is under warranty still?
Correct.
Okay.
So once, the thing that's in question is, was it a contractor that caused damage to the roof? And is that the source of the leaks? So it's gone back and forth, but to be honest, Skeptin is putting more effort into solving the issue right now. And just like with Trumbowersville, they didn't install the roof. They hired a contractor, and it's one of those, there's a lot of moving parts in it, but we're left holding the bag of the problems, seeing it on a daily basis.
We're responsible though, at the end of the day, right?
Well, that's correct.
Get it fixed before they go out of business.
Very well.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, stay tuned for that one. A couple more things. So high school HVAC issues. So a lot of the no heat issues we had, and it was, it was problematic for a while. I think we're down to very limited, if any, no heat issues. There's a few remaining issues of sensor calibration, some valves that aren't fully shutting off. We're getting closer to the end of the HVAC issues. I doubt you're hearing much of them. There's still a few on occasion, but it's, it is getting better and close to resolution there.
I just say, our exchange student that lives with us has had no heat in her chemistry class all year. And we're now in February in a high school that was renovated. I'm just throwing that out there. That should not have happened.
Do you know that?
If I were representing, I would be suing the HVAC company that installed this. This is, this is a new building, and that should not have happened.
I'll say that I look at the HVAC on a daily basis. I haven't, for earlier part of this week, being in bed, but most part, I am looking at temperatures on a daily basis. I can see it from my desk. There is one science room, and it probably is the chemistry room, that they've had some intermittent problems.
They've been in coats. They've been in coats all year. They've been wearing coats all winter.
You mean, they didn't turn up the Bunsen burners?
I, don't know, but no kid should be in a coat in chemistry class. It might be. It's, I'll, I'll check the name.
Stoneback, yes.
Yeah, that sounds familiar.
I'll confirm and visit there tomorrow.
He's had troubles for, for two years, two or three years, and, because that's how long we've had that wing, correct?
Yes, this is the second year of operation there.
And, and I, and I've heard it from him when I'm walking around, and then I sent him an email, and I probably could pull it up to date, ask him if he had any more issues. So he has not, he's, he and I have had many exchanges, so, and you don't know about that, correct?
Nope.
And, and so one of the things we have going on is people don't have faith in the work order process because of history or whatever. And, and what I normally do when I walk around, I text him right away and said, what's going on in this particular room? And is there a work order? And the answer, yes or no? Then we go from there. So we'll, we'll jump on it. So get with Barry in the morning.
Okay, so remaining items, just for your, this is facility committee informational items. Quakertown Elementary School boilers, we were given a temporary use from the LNI department for the boilers. They're so old, they're problematic, they're requiring us to spend about $15,000 to make them operational for the following heating season.
Annually or monthly?
What's that?
Annually or monthly?
Oh, this is a one-time thing. We've got a quote to satisfy the inspector. It's $15,000. What that is, is opening up the boilers, taking off all the inspection plugs, chemically cleaning the inside of the boiler, and the fireside as well. He wasn't satisfied with how the conditions of the boilers. It's really an age thing, but he wants plugs taken off the boiler that probably haven't been taken off in 30 years. There's a lot of labor in that, and the chemical cleaning could compromise things. So it's a lot of money, but unless we're going to replace boilers, which I don't think is a feasible thing to do at this point in time, we really need to spend the money. We can try to put some of our labor towards that to offset those costs, but it's something that a certified boiler company's got to do to satisfy LNI.
With the age of these boilers, what kind of maintenance annually are you anticipating?
So with this, so every year, we do have them cleaned out by a company. We contract, this year was HSA got the bid. They do fireside cleaning, but there's normally not a waterside cleaning. LNI wants to inspect low-water cutoffs and different things like that, your relief valves. They do that inspection, I believe, every two years. And almost every year, these boilers cost us thousands of dollars. This year's probably one of the worst, and it came up to the point of, we needed to get the boilers on, is why he gave us a temporary, so that we could get through this heating season. But he said, absolutely, you're going to have to do X, Y, and Z, or they're not getting passed for next year.
Anything useful on Tohicken or Milford?
Explain about the hot water heater.
So domestic water heater for Quakertown Elementary, that failed, and we actually used the domestic water heater from Milford, which was only about three years old. And we took something the size of, a little bit larger than a car, and put a standard size in. It was about this diameter, about this high, which would serve the purpose there. For Quakertown Elementary, getting those boilers out, the physical footprint would be a challenge in itself to even replace them. It would be a big challenge to do that. Tohicken Valley, their boilers are probably over 10 or 12 years old as well. I'm not sure it would be a good idea to move them. Good idea, though.
I understand, I'm asking you for a ballpark, so, and I'm not holding you to anything here, but what would it cost?
Annual?
No, to, to, to put in two, a brand-new boiler, whatever you want to put in there. And again, I understand you're going to throw a number at me and use stuff like that, but still...
$150,000 for one.
And what, do we need two?
We almost, do we have to? No, but everything we do in the district's redundant. So if, if a boiler fails, we have a backup that can go and run till the first one gets...
So ballpark $500,000 with the purchase and the installation, because it's going to be an installation and nightmare and a removal nightmare.
Right, and it's asbestos. Everything in there is going to compound the demolition of that as well.
A million dollars.
For a school that's apparently going to close for six years.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. For a school that has a limited use potential down the road.
So we're going to try to keep them operational as long as we need to.
Good news, right, Mr. Harper?
Yes. Last item is a good news item. Wanted to finish out that way. So Upper Bucks Tech School, they're looking at doing some improvements for their animal technology program. And so they contacted school districts, Palisades, Pen Ridge, looking for surplus furniture. And we just so happen to have some items at Milford Middle School that they could use to help their program. And we are giving them what they need to help with this animal technology program.
That's good news. I'm happy to hear that.
That's all I have.
That was quite a lot, Mr. Harper. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, moving along. Discussion of upcoming action items. There's, under fiscal items, the Bucks County IU number 22 programs and services with an IMRS budget for 2018, 2019. The board's going to be asked at our next meeting on February 27th, 22nd, to approve the BCIU budget. Last year, it was $57,047. It will be, I'm sorry, this year's portion is 57, 47. Last year's portion was 57, 850, so it actually dropped a little bit. There is a report on board docs for anybody that wants to review the particulars on there. Okay, we'll move on to the public comment on the upcoming fiscal consent agenda. Does anybody have any public comment? No? Okay, moving on to the fiscal consent agenda. First item is adoption of the preliminary budget for the 2018, 2019 school year. The Business Services Department is requesting approval of the proposed budget for fiscal year 2018-19 with exceptions. 2018-19 proposed budget for fiscal year totals $111,354,978. This includes $800,000 in budgetary reserve. The proposed millage rate is 1,64.3923, an increase of 6.6261 mills, or 4.2% over the 2017-18 millage rate of 1,57.7662 mills. The proposed expenditures of $2,128,022 more than the 2017-18 budget for an increase of 1.95%. And this will be a roll call vote. So, do we have any discussion?
Need a motion first.
Excuse me.
The other two items are, are called from the fiscal consent agenda, correct?
Other two items?
You're on the fiscal consent agenda, which means you would...
There's going to be separate votes on the other two.
Well, I don't think the other two exist anymore if you take a look at them.
Well, the one we're still going to, I think, have a discussion on about...
Okay, but that's not a vote. Because we struck the thing down just in direction, wasn't it? Wasn't it just direction? Because we're no longer soliciting an RFP, we're suggesting they prepare documents for a future...
Right, which we've already done.
To my point, those two are no longer valid, from what I can tell.
Well, this is a roll call, and the others wouldn't be a roll call anyway.
So this is the fiscal consent agenda? Yes, Mr. Jackson?
And this is just a preliminary budget, right?
This is the preliminary budget.
So we're not necessarily, if we can come in under, we're not...
This is the absolute ceiling for the budget.
Right, right. I just wanted to understand that. Thank you.
The, the hope is that over the next three months, that coming back under Act One happens in this.
Okay.
As you've seen, the very first numbers that come out each year are the numbers that the public thinks are the tax rates. So it doesn't matter, you could, you could put negative 4% tax rate in June, and the only thing that the public will think is we raised taxes by four something percent, so.
Yeah, the optics on this aren't good, but it's not necessarily real.
Before we get too far into the discussions, can we do the motion?
Yes, exactly. Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Do, do I have a motion on the budget as stated, preliminary budget?
I'll, I'll motion.
Okay, Ms. Mitchell, second?
I'll second.
Ms. Weed, okay. Discussion. I think we just had that, actually.
Now, in the middle of the sentence I was in before.
Can, can you finish? That would be helpful.
So the, even though this isn't the final budget, what happens in June, the optics on it are bad.
Can you tell me more what you mean?
Well, because the backlash actually from even allowing exceptions to be on the table from the last meeting, it's, it's riled up some people in the community, because they say, the visceral reaction is that they are raising taxes. And even though it hasn't happened yet, the, the first steps for it to be possible beyond Act One are in play. And so when I talk about the optics, it's about the perception in the community about the board's willingness to increase taxes even more than the index that we've tried to stick to in the past. You know, you know, I, my position on Act One is the firm line, and the task that I'm going to try to work with our committee and the administration on is to make Act One happen, and the administration's still asking for this, this wiggle room. So, you know, even though this isn't the final budget, we have until June to start, you know, looking for, you know, areas to get cost savings, to better identify the revenues. You know, really, we'll have the full picture in May before we go into that. Either way, the, it's not a budget that looks good, going with the index to a percentage of the community. Again, there's another group in the, in the community that's going to be very pleased that the board is willing to pull out their checkbook to go for things that they perceive as needs. So that's, that's basically where we're at. So we're not bound at this point for, for this budget, but...
What is exactly the point of...
Because what...
I'm confused. Like, what is the point of this? Is this meaningless?
It's the budgeting system of the state, correct? Yeah, it basically, yeah, there's a sequence of events we have to go through each of. So we got our first look at it.
First year.
Yeah, so basically, we got, we got a first peek at it the other week, and the administration asked for exceptions. They said they didn't feel that they were going to be able to make ends meet without taking the exceptions. And, and we voted to allow them to include the exceptions into the budgeting. So this is the first look at the budget, where they've, you know, taken the next set of numbers from the last time, incorporated the index into it, and are moving forward as, as this is how much they have to spend. And so our task is to peel off as much of that as possible before June. The real budget isn't approved until then. But the, the point is that the, I expect there to be some complaint about...
Sure, when you have a, you know, an article that says Quakertown is tax raises, that's pretty scary. I would be nervous about that, too. But hopefully, we can restore some confidence in the community by being very clear that we are doing everything possible to try to balance this without going that way. And if we're successful, then I think that will hopefully...
It's like, like I said at the last meeting, if the, if the capacity to take exceptions exists, then it puts me in a position to be hypervigilant over line items that much more carefully and, and sets up the demeanor for going to next cycle next year. You know, so that, so we're, again, at a task to really look at the items much more closely and, and, you know, go into programs and, and look for redundancies and efficiencies much more carefully even than we have before. Because, you know, again, unforeseen expenses from, you know, the, the budget that we had for two years ago for now didn't pan out, because we got two large bills specifically from the Peasars and special ads increases that were, were not calculated with accuracy, because the, the numbers that come from Harrisburg, we don't know until they come.[1744.98]
Well, what about getting the, you know, Gary's here, and he's a wonderful writer, to do responses. I read Melinda Rizzo's article, and she made it sound like taxes had been raised already-
Which is obviously clear.
-in the intelligence year, which is not accurate.
No.
That's, that's an alternative fact. And so, to use a phrase that's in our national equation here. And I think people need to be educated on the real facts. So what about doing a, a real fact article and what we actually voted for? And then the community will know.
Tried that for three years.
Can't wait. Well?
Yeah, I mean, you need to keep trying.
I think you need to keep trying.
The system is rigged. The system is designed to be foolish, and we're just pawns. And I submit that the administration, is there anything new in this information that you want to call our attention to compared to the last time you saw a budget? Any like miraculous, hey, look, instead of this tiny sliver of the pie that we can deal with that actually wouldn't cover the delta anyway, there's nothing, is there anything new, like crazy differences?
Let me jump on that for a second. Just add, I'm not sure, the, the school district, for those people who don't believe we offer up enough information about things that are going on in our board meetings, I remind them that a lot of information is on the website if they care to look. And, uh, on the website right now, under the report, under the report tab, there's a whole big collection of budgetary items for 2018, 2019. And one of those is an expenditure report and a history of the expenditures of this district. It's just the expenditure side, not the revenue, mind you, but the 2017-18 budget, the administration asked for expenditures of $109 million. That's what is on that report. Yet, they are estimating this year that they will actually have expenditures of $106 million. So last year's budget, this board approved expenditures of $3 million over what we actually are going to have to spend. So when we're talking about a budgetary item and the need to increase taxes, when we tell the community we need $109 million and we raise taxes accordingly, and then we find out that we only raised it $106 million, the question is, where is the discrepancy? And I'll pose that to the administration.
Thank you for telling me ahead of time that you were going to ask the question so we have a very accurate answer. Mr. Shock, would you answer?
I can answer that. The attachment H that you're referring to, the expenditure report, which has our historical actual numbers and then the 17-18 budget, is a little misleading, I guess I'll say. And the reason I'm saying that is, the budget number there was actually the official budget prior to closing Milford. So if you recall, last year, um, the, the vote on Milford happened in the summer, and by law we have to have our budget finalized and out in June. And because the vote didn't happen, we had to build the budget as if it were still in the inventory and the staff were still in the inventory. So it is a little artificially inflated because of that. There's also another attachment, which is V, which shows a, a better picture. If, let's say the vote would have happened before, we could have built that into the budget. We would have budgeted just over $108 million, which would have been the difference, the savings from closing Milford Middle School.
My favorite diagram is W, just, oh, more meaningless letters for everyone, but W is my favorite because it shows 10% of the budget is discretionary. The rest is fixed.
Right.
Good luck squeezing that rock. There's nothing to squeeze.
That's right.
It's rigged. What's not rigged is just, you know, contractual obligations.
Mr. Jackson, to answer your question?
Yeah, so it seems to me that the answer to the question is we had to prepare the budget as if Milford was not closing because we could not assume the vote that had not yet happened. Therefore, the costs were a lot, were heavily inflated to what they turned out to be.
That's correct, yeah. And if you, and I can pull it and put it up on the website, the original budget, I can put that up there. I think that was stating we were going to end up using $4.3 million of fund balance at that time, and the current estimate is more like $1.5, $1.6 million. So we cut into that because of the, the closure of Milford Middle School.
The, the reality is, we don't really get a lot of surprises. You know, the, this million dollars that we're trying to work into the capital budget to cover unforeseen is less than 1% of the budget. And, and the, the number that's come out in June, and if you recall the histogram I pulled out at the last meeting, you know, shows the preliminary budget meeting, how much was able to be, uh, taken off of that because there's a lot of wish list items that start out, you know, some, you know, staffing is a little overrepresented, and so, so the number will come down. I'm, I'm certain of that because it always has. But if you, you look back even, even prior to Dr. Harner, going back to 2012, that final June number and the actual expenditures of the district generally are within a percent. You know, basically, we come in within a million dollars. So the, the, the budgeting that's done, the final budget in June will likely, very accurately, within a span of several hundred thousand dollars, reflect the exact, the expenses that are going to be used next year. You know, the, the task now comes, you know, not to debating the accuracy of the forecasting, but bringing down that, that final number by the June vote so that the number that's accurate is a lower number. And that, and that's, that's where the finance committee comes in a task with working with the administration. That's basically it.
Okay, so I think it's time to vote on the preliminary-
One, one more thing, if I may?
Yes.
I apologize, but I do want to read something. This is my own words, and I apologize, but it's going to be critical of some board members. So please, please let me get through it before comments are addressed back. The following information is available on the district website. The previous board has increased taxes out or below the Act One index for past seven years. Each of those years' increase being less than 3%. In the preceding 19 years, taxes were increased in excess of 3% in 14 of those 19 years. So frankly, I believe the previous board has demonstrated to this community its belief in fiscal responsibility. Last year, the board again refused to approve exceptions and forced the administration to find still another solution to its ever-increasing costs. The solution offered was to close two schools and cut other programs. The board agreed with the administration's recommendations. The community did not agree, and for that reason, there are now four new board members. One of the contentions that the candidates offered was that the position of the former board, that we were facing continuously increasing costs we could no longer control, was in fact untrue, that there really was no budget crisis. So as we consider today whether or not to approve a preliminary budget that permits a 4.2% tax increase, which would be the largest in the last eight years, I would ask the new board members to explain to the public why there's such a need if the previous board was incorrect. If the previous board took unnecessary actions to reduce costs, then today we should be in a position where a 0% tax increase is possible, or at least maintain our tradition of simply raising taxes to the Act One minimum. It may be that the new board members are simply asking to pass this preliminary budget with its 4.2% increase possible to permit them as new board members to more deeply review the financial issues facing the district, which is a fair point, and frankly, it's one of the reasons I also voted with them, to allow them that time to look at the numbers. But if a final budget results in a tax increase above the Act One limits, or even if the final budget increases taxes at Act One, and that budget gets approved by the new board members, then I believe that they would owe an apology to the previous board for their characterization of the intents of their previous actions. My words.
I don't quite understand where you're going with this. I'm not sure, I'm, I'm also, I apologize to the audience to have to listen to that because I feel, I don't know what productive is going to come out of that. I think at the- Well, at the end of the day, right? I think what we're trying to do is take a look at, yes, where we are currently with the numbers. And I'm glad that we're analyzing, hyper-analyzing the numbers. If that's what's to come out of this, then I think that's great. And that's all I'll say.
So, so I'll just say that, that my biggest thing was, you know, with spending, and if you continue to spend money, you're going to continue to owe money. And so, uh, when a financial crisis was looming, and I've said to you, Mr. Jackson, on multiple occasions, that I don't know that I would have made a different decision than you guys made. But what I do know is that I wouldn't have spent $3.5 million on an athletic complex given the fact that we were facing financial challenges. I did say it. And I, I wouldn't spend more money until I understood what the finances look like. Because if at home, I didn't have that money, I would stop spending money. I wouldn't continue to go out and buy the next great thing. So, um, I often said that I didn't know what I would have done. I may have agreed with you guys had I been sitting on this. And when we had the conversation, I said that. But I also said that I would stop spending money.
Right.
Which you didn't.
That was your chance.
And so, and so, I, I said, and, and when faced with the question two weeks ago that we voted on about Act One, my only question was, if we don't make that decision tonight, does it affect us at all? And the answer was no, we will still have time to digest it. So, so that's my field. My field is, you know, sometimes things happen emergently, and you have to make a split-second decision, and other times you have a little bit of time to make the decision. And that's what I voted on. I didn't vote on increasing taxes. I voted on giving us time-
Correct.
-to further digest that if we are, as a community, faced with eliminating a program or raising taxes a little bit, that we have that option on the table. And if the option is, we eliminate a program and we don't raise taxes, then that's what we do. But we don't even know what that looks like. These things, these mandates of budgeting that are put in front of boards are, are simply to pair philosophies against one another. And it doesn't do anybody any good when you can't really analyze the spending that you're about to approve. And that's what we're asking, and I think that was the only thing I voted for. And while the optics may be glaring, that's, your comments perpetuate that.
Correct.
So, so let's do our due diligence, and I agree with Dr. Senecum, that I would love to see us not go above Act One index, and I would love to see where the redundancy is, and, and look at everything from the top to the bottom. Healthcare's facing a crisis that we're, we're doing that today in healthcare, where, you know, we got real fat at the top on healthcare and they're eliminating those positions. And so we need to be diligent in what we do. But again, we're putting, we put a lot of stress on the back of the teachers. We heard tonight a presentation, we don't, we don't know what, we don't know yet. So let's keep digging and get to a point where we can make an educated decision, and not one simply out of your gut and your philosophy on whether you think taxes should be raised or not. The, the fair thing is that you've raised taxes, and we may continue to raise taxes every year. I have no idea, but we need to dig a little deeper into this and understand it a little bit more before educated people can make a decision on it.
And there's a long-term strategy here. We can't, we're not, I think the goal of the new board members was, yes, the spending that has happened, occurred in the past, we don't feel, in some ways, was responsible. So we have such a small amount of money for some of the board members that we have control over, so let's make sure we're utilizing that. And I appreciate that there is now a facilities plan in place, but the reality is, and I'm not pointing fingers at anyone, but that was lacking for a long time. So we need to look at this thing from top to bottom to, to see what makes sense for us to, over time, and as a long-term, right, make the right decisions and, and look and analyze and not leave any, any stone unturned, as someone mentioned, and also leave all of our options on the table. So we haven't even had time to go through each of those individual items, and we hope to do so. And I just, I'm really hoping that, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I'm just perseverating on 90% of the budget is off limits. Don't know where you're thinking you're gonna look, but don't look at all 100% of the items. Just please look at the 10%, figure out how much of the rock paper you can cut.
Well, there's, there's also other programs, though, that we plan on taking a look at to see- No, we're not, that's not, that's not what we're saying. We're saying we want to look at the effectiveness and the way that we're spending in certain programs and the success of those programs. There's a lot of things to analyze here. Some of them possibly even sensitive, um, you know, programs that are very meaningful to myself and the community as well. So I, I don't know that it's fair to say that we are only going to be looking at that 10% because we are looking at other things outside of that 10% to make sure we're, you know, effectively running this business, essentially.
When will we get a glimpse of what the opportunity is to look at?
Every, every couple of weeks until June, basically. And so, you know, and so, in, in deference, you know, the thing is, having four new board members changes the character of the board. It's not just us like having one or two. And so I appreciate and, and deference, you know, the part of me that's not voting, the desire to have that wiggle room because then it's a, a bill, an opportunity to take a broader look at everything that is possible going through a budget cycle. And what I'm hoping is that after going through it and seeing how we come up to the final number that we end up with in June, that the rest of you will come back and join me next year and having that line in the sand about working with a budget that, you know, that is on the skinnier side to, from the get-go. But, you know, I absolutely understand, and, and again, like I said last time, I'm not gonna have, you know, I'm not gonna be mad about the, um, having the exceptions be on the table through the process because it gives a greater opportunity to see all that can be, you know. But, but still, the goal's going to be to not utilize them, and hopefully, if we don't have to, then we'll go back to not taking our exceptions.
I just have to add philosophically, as one of the new board members here, I am know what the tax base here is in Quagertown. And I can tell you, my husband and I pay at the very highest end of those taxes. So I am willing, I mean, we bought at the top of the market where we live in 2006. And I think it is so important, my daughter's been in this public school system. She goes to the public school. She's been in the public school here since she was in first grade, and she's now a senior in the high school. And I ran for the board and am on this board because I feel public education is so important. And I am willing to pay an extra 1% in taxes philosophically in order to keep our school district good and improve it. And the administration asked for that, for exceptions. And I think it was recognized two weeks ago that Dr. Harner has squeezed as much orange, or juice out of the orange as he can. And we need to look at that. And that's why I voted the way I did. And I think it's important that the community understands that. And, you know, I'm not running for national office or Congress. I'm here because I care about the school district. And, you know, I'm already at the top of the tax bracket in this community. An extra 1% over 2.8, I am willing to pay.
I have a quick question. Maybe this is a topic for another time, but, or maybe, I'll just state this, and you can let me know if you can give me more information at a later time. Do we have protections, and I think it's outside of our control, but do we, is, are there any protections in place for low-income? Protections from soaring property taxes, or that's, there's no such thing?
If you recall, at the last election cycle, there was an amendment made to the Constitution about that?
So I know that, but I'm saying just the way that the system is now, do they offer any, like, relief based on that, based on low income? Or does, is it just, everybody pays this percentage the same? There's no relief whatsoever?
It's all based on the assessment of the home you live in. There are no credits based on your income as far as real estate taxes. There are rebates related to gambling proceeds, but nothing intrinsically related to income.
That's my question. Thank you.
If you own property, you gotta pay to play.
Yeah, yeah.
And the last time the assessment was done? Mr. Garden?
My gosh, 1970s.
Yeah, I know people here that have older homes, and they have much bigger homes even than my husband and I do, and we moved here in 2006, so we have new construction. And they are paying for homes that are worth twice as much as mine, on 10 acres, just to throw this out there to the public. They are paying less than 50% of what my husband and I pay in taxes because their taxes have not been reassessed. So I think the public should keep that in mind, those of you on big farms that you've inherited, or that you have a lot of land that you've had for 30 or 40 years. You're paying a lot less.
You are.
You're paying a lot less than new construction. You are.
Is there any, any plan, not that I'm for or against? When do they do reassessments? Is that ever something that-
Commissioners have to approve.
That commissioners have to approve that? Okay.
They will not.
Okay.
I mean, 1971, think what the property values were then compared to- I mean, 1971, think what the property values were then compared to 40 years, 45 years later, to those of us who moved in in the mid-2000s. So, keep that, keep that in mind. What?
The houses are 40 years older.
They're still increased in value a lot in 40 years. So, yes, they have, ma'am.
She's 85 years old, living by herself.
Okay, I think.
She is 85 years old, people, on a fixed income. Where is she gonna live, when all of her income goes to your tax budget?
For the record, I've heard this story many times, knocking doors, talking to senior citizens. I know this is painful, right? And so, we should all be mindful, I think we all are mindful.
It's not painful, it's reality.
Right.
It's reality. You just keep talking about yourself and yourself and yourself.
Order, please. I think it's time we have the vote. I would just like to correct the record on one last thing for Mr. Jackson, because he's sadly mistaken. We never campaigned blaming you for raising taxes. However, individuals that were running against us decided to fabricate some sort of false reality that we were getting elected to order ta, to, in order to raise taxes. We had to point out to everybody that they did raise taxes when they were in this seat, and that is what was communicated. So, I hope that that helps correct your record.
Sure, it took the pressure off of him being criticized recently for his vote, so I hope it was worth that.
Yeah, I know. Okay, Madam Secretary? This will be a roll call vote. Again, this is the vote on the preliminary budget.
Mr. Akmanowicz?
So, this, this that we're voting on right now?
Mm-hmm.
It's not the actual budget. It's not the actual budget.
It's kind of, it seems silly. It's just like, is this like?
I mean, it's including these exceptions that I don't want to vote for, for the record.
But you did, last time.
No, no.
See, we didn't.
What's that?
Then vote no.
No, no. What would be the consequence of us all voting no? Could someone?
You're going to have to keep voting till you get to a preliminary budget, whatever the number is.
This evening.
Maybe I can explain it. So, what we did last time, again, it's a kabuki.
Is it formality?
It's a stupid formality that the state puts on us before we have all the numbers, and all we're doing is, it's like a, it's like a ratchet. So, we agreed last time to leave the ratchet up at a high level. Go ahead, knock yourself out, you don't need to get to Act 1. For some reason, people think that that's going to make them have different decisions, but I don't. So, all we're talking about here is if you say no, we want to stick to Act 1, you tighten the ratchet. The process says you can never loosen the ratchet again. So, we're basically capping the administration. Last time I did that, we said, you can take exceptions and ask for more tax money.
But there's oversight, there's oversight. It's not just, and I believe the people on this Finance Committee are committed to analyzing this in detail, right?
Once a budget's passed, no matter what you do.
Right, we're not passing a budget right now.
Correct.
This is not, this is not the final budget, this is just the preliminary.
The thing that's confounding, one, because it's a perfunctory measure we have to go through, is that we don't actually, we don't even, we don't even know what our income is until May. And so, it's interesting, it's like shopping for a house and finding a house you like, and getting approved for a mortgage and a payment before you've found out what your income is. And so, it is, it's kind of backward, and.
Or with the interest rate.
But there's no spending going to occur, correct?
No, no spending is on the hook as a result of this.
This is just silly dance.
It's a frustrating thing we go through, and what it does is it sets the tone for the administration in lining their ducks up for next year, and it puts them on task to have a starting point for working toward the June date. It's essentially irrelevant, except for the fact that whatever the upper end is, is the upper end. It establishes the ceiling.
If you lower it, you can never raise it, that's all. This is the worst-case scenario right now.
This is the worst-case scenario, yes.
Right, so what we're saying is, worst-case scenario, this is the budget.
This is the worst-case scenario.
Yes, they go back and say, okay, they keep digging, digging, and digging, and then we, the Finance Committee is challenged with finding.
If this is the scenario, I won't go down quietly.
We vote on the final budget in June, is that correct, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, this is early on in the process, this is the preliminary budget. Legally, we have to vote on it and pass one by tonight, just so everybody knows.
Why would anyone vote no?
Because I don't think we should raise taxes. So that's why I will.
Right, but.
Yeah, I mean, you've already lost.
Okay, let's continue with the vote.
I don't get it very much.
I believe the vote is to Mr. Akmanowicz. I overlook when we vote yes.
Ms. Weed?
I'm voting yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
I have, I'm not really sure the point of this, but I will vote yes.
Mr. McCucci?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
No.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
No.
Dr. Senikum?
No.
President Klein?
No.
Mission P S 5-4.
Okay, we have a preliminary budget.
It just means we haven't squeezed the administration down.
I still agree with what I said two weeks ago. Dr. Harner?
Yes, sir, I remember.
Thank you.
Like it was a moment ago.
Act 1, thank you.
Well, I agree with that too, but you said you needed wiggle room, so.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, that's the point, and that's what the public needs to understand.
I think, though, that we know the first budget is always going to be like the worst-case, right? So, I think what we need to understand is what the gravity of a decision that we would have to make down the road, like, for instance, closes another school, cut teachers, you know, we need to be able to have all these facts before we decide. And I have confidence we're not going to have to do any of that, so maybe I'm just being too optimistic.
Okay.
A great book called Hope is Not a Strategy.
You know, I don't know if I want to sit next to him anymore, because other than his funny jokes at times, he's really pessimistic, and he's draining me over here.
I'm better when we're done with the budget.
Let's move on to the information items.
Why do you think I didn't move?
See, you put me here on purpose.
That's my daughter you're talking about.
Yeah. I was about to crack on you.
American Eagle Used Clothing Company, who are recycling specialists, will place a used clothing recycling bin on our property to collect unwanted clothing and shoes. There's a document on Board Docs if you want more details on that.
What property? This one, up front.
It's in the document here.
Is that what that says?
Yes.
Okay.
Commerce Drive. I'm sorry? Who's working with this contractor?
We're, something may have been just a.
And why are we going to give them exclusive rights to be the only ones to put a bin out there? I would not vote to have that, I want that struck.
Located in the sixth-grade center of Harvey Lot, not 100.
Is it just that you're saying that maybe there's a better-suited vendor for this type of?
No, no, I don't see why we should give any one company exclusive rights to get our students donated material or their families donated. I don't believe there's anything in there that says it is exclusive. There is. There is? Okay.
If anyone puts in it, they collect what comes out of their container.
Now, American Eagle has exclusive rights and is the only company authorized to serve this clothing recycling bin.
Oh, I see.
Isn't there enough around Quakertown already for that sort of thing?
There's, there's a lot.
And send all your young children's shoes to my house, because we bring those to the watermelon that are light, gently used, so that we're finished.
So, am I, am, am I hearing there's not a desire to do this, this information item?
Exclusively with the straw conical.
Yeah, I think that's the part that's troubling.
I don't know why we need it on school property. Aren't there plenty of, I mean, what's the benefit?
We can easily say no.
I'd love to say yes, I just don't want to give them exclusive rights, I mean.
That's a sticking point.
Apparently, there's not, nobody else beating down our doors to do it, other than them, so I'm not sure why it matters.
Should we get an RFP for clothing drives?
Oh, man.
I need to make a.
I'm not going to block this, so.
Well, it's just that wording, that's all that we.
How long is a good, how, is this a time thing? Is it like a year? So, you want to give it a year and see if it works out?
You'll drive by a parking lot and see one of those boxes, if people can pull up and throw stuff in, like the other 72 boxes around Quakertown.
It might be nice, just because people are visiting that area to convenience, but I see what you're saying.
It does say that they'll keep the area clean, which is probably why they wouldn't be the only one.
Do you get money for this? Do we get money for it? No, the only reason I ask is because I know that my daughter's going on this trip, and they donated, they collected like 7,000 pounds of clothing.
They get money, yeah.
They got money for it, and it was just, you know, stuff that.
Mr. Harper, can we revisit this in a year after the initial and see if it's been a problem, or, you know, if there's any other issues surrounding it?
Do we like, we think it's a good idea?
It seems like a good one.
Okay.
I handed it to him.
I see, yeah.
It came into me.
I was going to ask you next.
No, thanks, sir.
But, yeah.
I think it is, helping others is always a good idea. I figured it doesn't cost us anything, and it's a one-year retainer or whatever, one-year renewable.
We'll revisit in a year.
Thank.
Okay, moving on, the RFP for food services has gone out, and the QS, QCSD Union and Management are working collaboratively at the consortium level on district wellness initiatives. There is an article attached to Board Docs if you would like to read more.
It is the one that I sent you last week, about Anita England.
The suspension report for January is on Board Docs if you wish to review that. And again, a reminder that updates to the Board Briefing Book are located under the Library tab in Board Docs. Okay, moving on to communications, I do not believe there's any communication item this month, is there?
Correct.
Okay. New business, do any board members have new business they would wish to bring up at this point? Okay, which moves us to the last public comment of the evening. Is there anybody that would like to comment? Okay.
Can I just say, this is just something I wanted to point out, I went with my kids to the Alice in Wonderland musical that was put on by directors Karen Quinn and Marcia Van der Slies, and it was phenomenal. The kids did a magnificent job, it was over 100 kids, I think, 120 coordinated, it was, I mean, it's hard to keep my three-year-old's attention, but the whole time, he was really enjoying it. We did, we sat in the back, though, so that we knew he's going to melt down any second, we're out of there, you know. But it was just a great performance, so I just want to recognize those directors and those kids that did such a great job.
Thank you.
Was a great show. Very thankful I got to go take my family, who also enjoyed it very much.
Okay, dates for board members and their calendars, Thursday, February 22nd, there will be a policy meeting in the Board Caucus Conference Room Number 3 here at the DSC, that's at 5:45. At 6, there will be a Finance Committee meeting, Community Room A here at the DSC, and then followed at 7 by the regular voting meeting here in the Community Room at the DSC.